The Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. We have a nice group in the audience. Thank you for being here this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a short announcement about our open podium invitation, which is open to all residents. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting, which are typically held the first and the third Tuesday of each month, from 6:30 to 6:55 in this council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (952) 949-8412. By noon of the meeting date, with your name, phone number, and subject matter, it helps us to be prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. We have several proclamations and presentations this evening. The first one, I'd like to invite up Patrick Donahue. He will give a presentation on the One Million Cups Initiative. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Again, my name is Patrick Donahue. I'm a resident of Eden Prairie. I live at 8950 Gould Road. And tonight, I'm going to share with you some background on One Million Cups, an entrepreneurial organization that we've started here in Eden Prairie. And tonight, I'm going to start with why we do One Million Cups. And it starts right here with Soleme. Soleme grew up in Eden Prairie, went to Eden Prairie High School. And she put together an app that helps teens deal with anxiety. And early on, when she started her company, Cognific, she presented at One Million Cups in St. Paul, and went on to utilize other groups like that to support her entrepreneurial journey. And she's gone on to be very successful. And as evidenced here, she was able to come back to our great city to present what she has done to her alma mater. And so that's when we wake up every Wednesday morning to go to One Million Cups. That's what inspires us to do One Million Cups. So I'm going to share with you a few slides, so everybody here has a little background on what One Million Cups is and what it looks like, and invite everyone to participate, because One Million Cups is truly a safe place for entrepreneurs to share their story, and it's inclusive. And what's really important is that we come together as a community, and we ask a simple question. What can our community do for you? And that sparks engaging dialogue with that entrepreneur and members of the community to find resources to support the entrepreneurs in their journey. The beautiful thing about One Million Cups is that it's simple in its formation. It started with the Kaufman Foundation in Kansas City in 2012. They invited entrepreneurs to come into the foundation to talk about what their needs are. They have gone on to support over 200 groups forming throughout the United States. I was a lead organizer for St. Paul, and I brought One Million Cups here to Eden Prairie, because I was on my third neighbor referring them to go to St. Paul and elsewhere, and said, "We should really start this here in our backyard." And so we're part of one of 200 groups throughout the United States. The Midwest is really robust, because Kaufman is out of Kansas City. And I'm happy to report that Eden Prairie is one of the strongest One Million Cup groups in the United States. And I'm going to share with you some fun things, how we're getting Eden Prairie on a national map for entrepreneurship. I want to just cover a few things on what we are, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. First and foremost, we're consistent. It's very easy to find One Million Cups. We meet every Wednesday at 9:00 AM. And we are organic. It's all 100% volunteer-driven, like myself and community organizers. And it's simple. We only require three things: coffee, space, and people. And I want to point out that there are no fees charged, there is no checking book, there is no money that's moving. Nobody is required to sign up to attend, so we don't collect any data. We do that on purpose, because One Million Cups is designed to be as inclusive as possible. And some of those things can be artificial barriers for some members of our community to come out and to engage in something that can support them in their growth. So this is what happens. This is the power of community. We did our first One Million Cup seat in Prairie on January 2nd of 2018. Since then, we've gone on to host 67 meetings, where 87 entrepreneurs have shared their story, people like Soleme. And we've had over 1,500 attendees come out. And when you multiply that, there's just countless of connections that have happened in our community that engage entrepreneurs in their entrepreneurial journey. This is what a typical meeting looks like. This was our second meeting, held out at Green Acres. Steve Brem, who owns Berry Coffee here in Eden Prairie, has been so gracious to give us all the coffee that we can handle. So we've got the coffee part covered, which is super cool. He actually came in to share his entrepreneurial story, and that was very well received in our community. Eden Prairie has been a wonderful host. One of our favorite venues is, of course, at the Community Center. This is a picture from our very first meeting. Many of the people in that room are neighbors of mine and people in Eden Prairie. And this was our first presenter, Andrew Jones, who owns a business here in Eden Prairie, Arc Suppression Technologies. He's won a number of awards, and that was our first presenter. We also host our meetings at Hennepin Technical College, to take advantage of the wonderful space here in our backyard as well, and at Green Acres. We rely on people throughout the community, like our neighbor resident Matt Tim, who also owns Magnetic North here in Eden Prairie. The little flyers that we handed out beforehand, he printed those, they designed them, they're the ones that are putting stuff out on Twitter. So those are the little things that are adding up to allow us to get the word out about One Million Cups. We also have put up a couple of tables at Eden Prairie High School for Career Expo in October 2018. It was very well received. John Titus here, and also his good friend, Bob Albertson, are two of the most prolific inventors in the state of Minnesota. Bob alone has over 200 patents in his name. The students, there was a constant crowd around him that whole morning, which was really impressive to see. And we've engaged with the students, we've engaged with the high school. Students have come out and practiced their deck of presentations, and that's been very well received. Just a couple more things. Here's my neighbor KP, that presented his company at One Million Cups. These are a couple local veterans, one of which is on the right, is Jason Sedlak, who just started a business here in Eden Prairie called College Honks and Moving. Rick, you might be familiar with these guys. So, very impressive, the things that we can pull together here in our city. David Lindahl, and former Mayor Nancy Tyer-Lukens, presented in June of 2018 at Hennepin Technical College. Nancy wanted to come and engage the entrepreneurial community ahead of going to a mayoral conference that was hosted by Kaufman. So we did six or seven companies that were here local, did lightning round presentations, and engaged about 80 people in a dialogue about what are the entrepreneurial needs of our local community. And that was very well received. We did a year-end celebration here. Nearly 100 people showed up. You can actually see Rick, and Nancy was there as well, in the far left-hand corner. We hosted that downstairs in the beautiful space here at the city center. Here's an example, the only time we've ever pulled together money. Literally, myself and a couple people, we put in a few hundred dollars personally, just to buy food and beverage for everybody here this morning. And so, otherwise, everything was hosted, from the coffee and the space and everything to make this happen. So to wrap this up, this is what a sample presentation looked like. Tyler Pope is here today, owns 3D Printing Alley. It's a 3D printing company, based here in Eden Prairie. And he would go and give a little bit of background on his company and his entrepreneurial journey. And then he would wrap it up by saying, "Here's the things I need, where I can get some help." And that's where we engage in the dialogue on how our community can support him and his business. And then I have a special announcement tonight that I wanted to share with everyone. In April, we were one of two One Million Cup chapters throughout the United States that was specifically asked by the Kaufman Foundation to represent entrepreneurs in Washington, DC. Kaufman fully paid for everything. One of our community organizers, Chris Polster, along with Tyler Pope, being the representative of entrepreneurs, went and met with several national policymakers in Washington, DC, to talk about the issues that are facing our small business community. This is really important. And why One Million Cups is important, and why we need to support the Solemes of this world, is because entrepreneurship is actually at an all-time low. You may not believe that because of the headlines, but the reality is, new business starts is at an all-time low. And that's a really critical part of our economy, to support people like Soleme in their entrepreneurial journey. And that was a large part of that discussion in Washington, DC. And so with that, I'd like to, John and Tyler, can you guys just stand up? These are a couple of our community organizers. John is actually presenting tomorrow at Hennepin Technical College. He is the inventor of the CAD CAM system. He also likes to tell the story how he was the one that decided to put the big flags up at Perkins Restaurant. So, he's going to share his story tomorrow at Hennepin Technical College. But it's us and a dozen other people that are the community organizers that make it happen. So a big thank you to them, and to all of our friends in the community that make One Million Cups happen. And a special big thank you to the city of Eden Prairie, for all the help and the support to just do this, to share who we are, what we're doing, to be able to utilize wonderful, beautiful space, because that's what it takes to bring the community together, to support entrepreneurs in our community, and to keep the robust nature of small business happening in our backyard. So with that, thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
First, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick, and others here. I'll just add, and you may or may not know this, but the Kaufman Foundation's mayoral conference is being held in two weeks in Kansas City, and I've been invited.
Perfect.
And just to let the public and taxpayers know, it's an amazing opportunity for me, but for our city and what I'll bring back. It's completely funded by the Kaufman Foundation Flight Hotel Meals. There's absolutely zero expense to the taxpayers. But for a mayor to qualify to go, they have to agree to a project. And the project that I'm going to be learning more and more about is how to promote an incubator entrepreneurial growth project here within our city. So I'll be connecting back with you when I come back. But it was really former Mayor Nancy Tyer-Lukens urging that I get involved. And Elizabeth Kautz, who is Mayor of Burnsville, also has been instrumental in bringing some mayors down from this area. So incredibly timely, thank you. I'd like to connect more with you after I get back.
Terrific, terrific.
Can you add?
Yes, please.
So Patrick, thank you. Being an entrepreneur, being an engineer, and a businessman, and I hear this, the work you're doing is awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you're doing in Eden Prairie. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, when you love something, you do it. It's easy to do it. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also echo that same sentiment.
This time, I'm in first.
I know.
So not being an engineer, I still echo, but anything else, anybody?
Well, I just want to say thank you on that, Patrick. I also own a small business. And I find that interesting, that you said it's at an all-time low now. That's actually kind of disturbing, you know, because so much of our country's growth comes off of the entrepreneur spirit. But thank you for what you do.
Yes. Thank you. And I would add that the Kaufman Foundation is the largest foundation dedicated solely to supporting entrepreneurship in the nation. And it's actually a lot of their work where those numbers and statistics and surveys come out of. So I would highly encourage people to engage with them if we ever need numbers or information on what that looks like.
I do have one question. If somebody wants to go to your meeting, how do they find, since you don't always meet at the same place, how do they find out where the meetings are?
That is a terrific question, because a long-term goal of ours would be to have one meeting location, because that is the only challenge we have today. But we are so blessed to be in a city that has wonderful spaces. And all three places we meet at are, of course, within a couple of minutes of each other. So we ask people to go to OnwardEdenPrairie.com. That's owned and operated by Kaufman, but we utilize that. And they put in Eden Prairie, and it pops up our website. And so every Wednesday, people have to check that to make sure, double-check that if it's at Hennepin Technical College, Green Acres, or at the Community Center.
It's 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock?
9:00 to 10:00 AM every Wednesday, and it's open to the public. And we serve free hot coffee to everybody. So please come.
Patrick, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Cheers.
Tonight, we have a couple proclamations. And proclamations are, for me, exciting, because they're opportunities to really acknowledge and recognize tremendous value, really, that's within our city. And tonight, particularly with our senior center, and we have some senior representatives here, I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll come down and greet our senior center representatives. Proclamation. Whereas the increasing number of seniors in Eden Prairie bring many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses, and government, particularly city council, I think we're joining their, I think we have joined the ranks. Whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the needs, resources, and expertise of our senior, and awareness improves participation and action. And whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom, which will impact our future. And whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community, and recognize the organizations that serve older adults, and whereas Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community, now therefore, Eden Prairie City Council does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Senior Awareness Month, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on the 7th day of May 2019, Ronald A. Case, Mayor, on behalf of our council members Brad Aho, Kathy Nelson, Mark Freiberg, and P. G. Noryan. I'll come down, and if the representatives want to come on up.
Do you want to make a speech?
We do a handshake, and you can hold on to it as well. How about everybody get around? Come on over, wherever you want, where do you want?
How about you guys go over there?
Don't go too far. All right.
She's got real hair.
Thank you. Appreciate all of you.
So I just got invited to join that group because of my gray hair. So some of you that are faking it up here, you might want to change that. Who am I looking at? I don't know who I'm looking at. All right. Gray hair is great. It's okay not to have gray hair, too. Brad, you can laugh here. All right, moving on quickly. So we have some donations tonight. And Jay, I think I'll turn this over to you. And I believe you'll, I think you'll take the next two.
Actually--
I guess the next one.
Police Chief Greg Weber will be presenting this.
Mr. Weber. Good evening, Mayor, council members. So the resolution you have before you tonight is a $5,000 donation from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund. This is the second of a three-year donation that they secured for the purposes of funding Safety Camp, which is a joint venture between the Parks Department, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. Lisa Toomey, our Crime Prevention Fund President, is here this evening. And we're very grateful for the work they do in securing these funds. And we believe this $5,000 will go to good use in this year, as well as next year, for the Safety Camp.
Great. We do need a motion, then, if someone wants to move that?
I would move to adopt the resolution, accepting the donation of $5,000 for the Eden Prairie Crime Fund that was donated from Comcast to go towards Safety Camp.
Sogga.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Is J.D. Keller here? No. Okay, it looked like from our--
She's shaking her head, no.
Okay, sounds good. So since Chief Greg Weber was up front, that's relevant and pertinent to the next proclamation. We have phenomenal public safety in Eden Prairie. And I think those of us that have lived here a long time, and those of us that have lived elsewhere, know how great our police and fire departments are. And I'm so proud of the officers on the Police Department and our firefighters. So there's a proclamation that actually was declared by John F. Kennedy back in 1962, recognizing National Peace Officers Memorial Day. So I'm going to read a proclamation. Proclamation from the city of Eden Prairie, Hennepin County, Minnesota. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the police officers of the Eden Prairie Police Department have played a critical role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community since January 1st, 1973. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 68 sworn members of the Eden Prairie Police Department, who are deeply committed to selflessly protecting the residents of Eden Prairie regardless of danger or hazard to themselves. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, nearly 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the service and sacrifice of those 280 Minnesota law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty will be recognized and honored at the Law Enforcement Memorial Association's Candlelight Vigil at the Minnesota State Capitol grounds on May 15, 2019. And whereas May 15, 2019, is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I, Ronald A. Case, Mayor of the city of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, on behalf of the Eden Prairie City Council, hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through the 18th, 2019, as National Police Officer Memorial Week, 2019, in the city of Eden Prairie, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the country, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on May 7, 2019. Chief Weber, I'm sure you will, but please extend our sincere gratitude for all that your police department does regularly, daily, for the people of Eden Prairie. All right. Rick, I believe we have Human Rights Award.
We do, Mayor. I would like to welcome our Human Rights and Diversity Commission to present three Human Rights Awards.
Hi. My name is Catherine Lott. I'm one of the commissioners on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. The goal of the Human Rights Awards is to recognize Eden Prairie individuals, nonprofit organizations, business, and youth, who have worked to create an inclusive community spirit throughout actions, activities, and programs. The Eden Prairie Human Rights and Diversity Commission is proud to be able to recognize outstanding citizens who embody the Human Rights Manifesto. This year, we are honored to recognize the 26th anniversary of the Eden Prairie Manifesto. I'm going to read the manifesto to everyone. The Eden Prairie Manifesto asserts that we, as representatives of Eden Prairie businesses, city government, educational, and religious institutions, accept special roles and responsibilities in fostering diversity in our community. We are dedicated to upholding the rights of every individual in our community to freedom, dignity, and security, regardless of religious affiliation, race, ethnic heritage, gender, age, sexual orientation, physical or mental ability, or economic status. Representing all sectors of Eden Prairie, we publicly declare our intentions: to continue the development of a multicultural community, which will not tolerate acts of harassment or intolerance; to establish, communicate, and encourage community standards that respect diversity; and to promote acceptance and respect of individuals in an atmosphere that cares for others. The manifesto was originally adopted by Eden Prairie City Council on May 18, 1993, and it was reaffirmed January 4, 2000. We are and remain intolerant to intolerance. Up first is Greg to present.
Thank you, Catherine. Mayor Case, city council members, city staff leaders, and guests. It's that time of year again. It's my privilege, my name is Greg Leeper. It's my privilege to serve as the Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. And truly, one of the best days of the year for us is the opportunity to present the Human Rights Awards. And we have a few categories that we'd like to present tonight to you, as we celebrate part of what makes Eden Prairie great. So it's my honor tonight to present the individual award to Christine Erickson. Christine upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by working to raise awareness about human trafficking and supporting survivors of trafficking. She's been the driving force behind the Stop the Trafficking 5K walk-run at Purgatory Creek for the past six years. Stop the Trafficking is a collaborative, community-wide event to raise awareness about human trafficking. And all proceeds from the race are designated to organizations working to help sexually exploited youth and women. The Stop the Trafficking 5K event has raised over $120,000 since 2014, when it began. We are grateful for Christine's tireless work to raise awareness and to make a difference in our community. So please welcome with me and congratulate our recipient for this year's Individual Human Rights Award, Ms. Christine Erickson.
Hi. My name is Nikita Dar. I am a student commissioner on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and I would like to present the Youth Award to Ms. Skali, one of my fellow seniors. Ms. Skai upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by advocating for Muslim students at Eden Prairie High School. As the president of the Muslim Student Association, she goes above and beyond to advocate for fellow students. She has organized events that aim to bridge the gap between various faiths and improve interfaith relationships. She centers the Muslim Student Association meetings on themes of inclusivity and tolerance. She also acts as a liaison between Muslim students and school administrators to address concerns brought forward by her peers. Ms. Skai is a shining example of the power of student leadership, and we are honored to have her here tonight.
Ms. Skai, do you want to call?
Yeah.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Magna Chamata. I am also a student commissioner for the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. Tonight, I would like to recognize our nonprofit award for the Human Rights Awards, Onward Eden Prairie. Onward Eden Prairie upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by ensuring that young people have a place to call home. Their dream is to ensure that all young adults in our community will have a safe place to sleep, so that they can dream and prepare for a successful future. Their impact is best expressed by one of their own residents. In the words of this resident, "Living in onward EP house allows me to sleep peacefully and make home my own." Onward also recognizes that supporting young adults goes beyond giving them a place to sleep. They partner with Oasis for Youth to offer access to an onsite case manager that works with residents to work on life goals and ongoing stability. By lifting up young people in our community, Onward Eden Prairie works every day to create a community where everyone is given an opportunity to thrive. Congratulations, Onward Eden Prairie. Congratulations, Onward Eden Prairie.
Thank you to our Human Rights and Diversity Commission for all the work you do as well, and especially in this night highlighting the people out in the community that also have contributed so much. Mr. Getcho, I'm just throwing something off the top of my head, but I think since we have new council members for the first time in eight years, that it would be good if we reaffirmed as a council again the manifesto, so possibly at a future council meeting when all five of us are here, I think that would be really a good thing to do. Are there any items to add to the agenda prior to us approving the agenda? Anyone have any additions? I'll entertain a motion then to approve the agenda as written.
I move, I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Any corrections to either one of the minutes, either from the workshop or the meeting held back on April 16? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve both at the same time.
Move to approve the following city council minutes. The council workshop held Tuesday, April 16, 2019, and the city council meeting held Tuesday, April 16, 2019.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in fa— oh, any additional discussion? I don't think so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Moving on to the consent calendar, A through N. Any items to question, to poll? Any issues, any of you have with anything on the consent? If not, could I have a motion?
Move approval of items A through N on the consent calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. We have two public hearings this evening. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, our first public hearing is a development proposal coming before you from the International School of Minnesota. They are here for a first reading, and they are requesting the approval to construct a 5,742-square-foot cafeteria and classroom addition on the west side of their existing middle school classroom building at their current location in Eden Prairie, which is east of Highway 494 and south of 62 on Beach Road. That's an approximately 55-acre site in Eden Prairie, of which the campus currently has six buildings on it already. The addition includes a new dining area, full-service kitchen on the first floor, new and upgraded classrooms, and office space. The applicant is here tonight to provide an overview and a presentation. The city council needs to hold a public hearing, and the applicant and city staff can answer any questions that the city council or the public may have.
Do we want to— any questions of staff yet, or just go right into the presentation? Great. Thank you for being here. You may proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is John Harris with Harris Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the International School of Minnesota. This is something that I've done since 1988. It's a long time ago, and actually have been involved with every building on the campus at the International School. Particularly exciting to me because the building that we're adding on to was really pretty much the first building that I designed as a young architect on my own, and really was sort of the path that allowed me to have the client that I still have today. With that, I'll get to the presentation. The slide is kind of small, but as you can see, the way the school is oriented, you can see my mouse moving up there. To the west of the main entry road is a large wetland which drains down into Bryant Lake. So actually, the area of the campus that is buildable is actually quite small. It is very hilly, it is very wooded, it is an absolutely beautiful site. So there have been many constraints that we've had to deal with on the site. And as you can see, the area in the red square is the area that is currently occupied by a cafeteria and the classroom building, which ends in this shaded area right here. I'll go to the next slide. You can see the existing cafeteria and classroom building here. Our addition is a two-story addition, 5,742 square feet, that has access directly off the entry drive. Because of the difficulty, again, going back on this slide, you can see there's a lot of difficulty that we would have getting any kind of roadways internal on this site as it's so steeply sloped. So that means that we really need to enter and get our deliveries and have our main cafeteria and classroom right off the main entry road here. As you can see, the buildings on the campus, three of the buildings are very similarly shaped. They're shaped in really this sort of three-pod format with a kind of a commons wedge between each of the pods. We are going to be adding to the west here cafeteria addition, trash room, and service areas. I'm going to get to a larger plan here in a moment. Second floor, have a biochem lab and classroom with exterior garden space, and a physics lab, and a storage room as well that each of the classrooms can access. This shows the main floor. There will be an entrance primarily that will be used for after-school pickup that will be accessed right off the main road and across from the parking lot. New dining area, new renovated dining area in the existing building, brand-new state-of-the-art kitchen, walk-in cooler freezers, trash room, that kind of thing. The upstairs, again, biochem lab, physics lab, all state-of-the-art, all really the best equipment that we can have up there. This just shows a little bit more of the extent of the build-out of the kitchen and the dining area and the renovated dining area. This really comes on the heels of a recently completed project that we did for early childhood education, which is part of a new master plan that the school started in 2017, which envisions new educational facilities, new facilities for learning, and sports facilities as well, as well as last, let's see, in 2015, we completed a residence hall there as well. Here's a couple elevations that really show the exterior materials. Part of this new master plan is really to take a fresh look at the school and the materials and the architectural vocabulary that we want to use moving forward. As I said, the school was started in 1985, and really followed kind of a pattern that was laid down by the Winston and Elizabeth Close, the original architects of the project of a brick building, a very simple brick building with large window openings, relatively unadorned. We're taking that and we're changing that up, utilizing some of the materials from the existing building, primarily the colors of the metal, the white window trim, roof trim, and we're using new materials. The primary material of the building will be white fiber cement siding with some anodized aluminum metal paneling, very large windows with spandrel glass. We're also going back to operable windows, which is a big part of the school's emphasis on healthy buildings and sustainability. You can see that from the west elevation, again, this would be the, you know, lots of glass here, really, we're hoping it's really going to be a great entry statement as you come into the campus. Very bright, modern, white building. This is a really boring page that I'll just kind of skip by, but it's been referenced in the report about the Class I materials on the building. And so we needed to do a calculation as part of our submittal to prove out that the building in its entirety still complied with the 75% requirement for Class I materials, which it does. We're actually at about 80%. Perspective view from the southwest, you can see the building cantilevers out, providing some sunscreening for the cafeteria below. This would be the physics lab up here, and the biochem lab over here with the outdoor garden. We're also doing some landscaping out front. Oops. And this is a perspective from the west. Unfortunately, this gate that we have here that's meant to screen the garage door didn't really print out very well, but there will be one there. Again, showing the landscaping and the entrance that is really going to be used for students to be picked up after school. So with that, that ends my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. The representatives of the International School are here as well.
Council, questions? Comments? Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, you've got a lot of lovely, large windows. But are they properly tinted and such so not too much heat comes in, in, you know, the spring and summer and early fall months? And also insulated adequately so it doesn't lose too much heat in the wintertime?
Yes, in fact, we were just talking about that today, making our glass selections. Similar to the other buildings that we did, particularly in the north, the windows are designed with a very high U-value, or very low U-value, excuse me, so they are tinted and they have a high solar reflectance value. Also, the building is very well insulated.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because there's nothing worse than having your child in an area that really heats up, and then it's hard for them to, you know, think, do whatever, simply because they're so uncomfortable. So I love the big windows and all the light, but old-style ones had some adverse effects.
Yeah, we've also, you can see here that we have sunshades on the south and on the west, so that's going to help alleviate some of the solar gain as well. But the windows are tinted and are designed specifically for south and west elevations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I got a question, if I could. How many inches do you estimate as far as trees are going to have to be impacted by it? All right. Is there anything that's going to be that we consider being? I'm trying to find here, as far as a heritage tree or significant trees?
No.
Okay. That's what I was kind of guessing.
Yeah, there are a lot of trees, as you know, on the site, and none of those large trees are being impacted with this—
Very good.
—development.
Thank you.
You can ask questions later as well. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. So this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this issue? Council, why don't we go ahead and make the motion close? Well, if no one else has any questions here, we could go ahead and make the entire motion. Anyone?
Move to close the public hearing. Do you want the rest of it?
Sure.
And adopt a resolution for planned unit development concept review on approximately 55 acres, and approve the first reading of planned unit development district review with waivers on approximately 55 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and authorize issuance of an early land alternation permit for the International School at the request of the developer, subject to the conditions outlined below, and authorize the issuance of an early footing and foundation permit for the International School at the request of the developer, subject to conditions.
Second.
Is there a second? Before we actually take the vote, and any of you can add any comments, and I just wanted to say I had the opportunity last evening, my days are crunching together, but it was last evening, wasn't it, to swing by, I just wanted, at 5 o'clock, just to take a peek at the place, the spot exactly where the addition will go. It's a very low-impact addition, causing very little damage, I guess if you want to say that to any of the— well, there weren't any trees that I saw. But at any rate, I did check in the office, and they were so nice, those regional directors in the back, and took me on a tour of the building and the site. Amazing site, I regret to say. That was my first time up there, and I was so impressed with that amenity to have the International School here in Eden Prairie. And they're sitting on just an incredible piece of land. And from everything I heard from their program, it sounds pretty exciting as well. So on behalf of Eden Prairie, we are so happy to have you in our city. With that said, any other comments before we take the vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, welcome again for the—I don't know how many additions this is, but—
Many.
How many?
Many.
Many.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We're pleased to have you here. All right. Our second is much more perfunctory, I believe, so Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. That is correct. This—you actually had one of these at the last meeting, and this is vacation of easements, drainage, utility, and sewer easements for a development project. I think it was the Beverly Hill Project last time. This time it's Smith Village. So the council is required to hold a public hearing to vacate these easements, and all of the new easements are part of the new plat with the new development.
All right. Let's go— council, any questions before we open up to the public? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the council chambers wish to address the council on this vacation of drainage utility and sanitary sewer? All right, seen none. Council?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating drainage, utility, and sanitary sewer easements.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Moving on to payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
I move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second? I'll ask you if you have questions in a moment. Did anyone have anything they wanted to question? If we can still question now. Anyone? If not, we'll take the roll call vote.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, moving on. We had no reports of council members, but we do have the appointment of something I'm really excited about, a housing—
Mark has it up. Good point.
Oh. I do have something I want to chat—
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear about—the—I didn't pick it up in the agenda piece, so—
No, thank you.
Take it away.
I'm sorry, it wasn't in the agenda. I did chatted with Mr. Gashow about it. We're about at the time of the year now where it seems that some of our neighbors like to incorporate residential trash containers in their landscaping scheme, and I think it's kind of something to address. Over the last year, we've spent about 100 complaints about trash receptacles on the residential side being in the front yards. And I think it's one from after talking to Mr. Geshow, city manager, that of those 100, once they became aware of it, about 95% of the people immediately complied with what the ordinance is. And I'm thinking that we need a little bit of education through our website where we can maybe put forth again what the ordinance is. So I've seen some trash cans, like in my neighborhood, six, nine months, sitting right in front of their double garage door, and they're not even using their garage. It just sits in their driveway. And I think it's about the time when we should be proactive with it and bring it forth again so that people do understand there is an ordinance in place. And this also goes with commercial. I had an experience last week where I saw a trash receptacle sitting right next to the front entrance of a restaurant that I like to frequent quite often, and it was overflowing. And it can't be really out front like that, where all the other ones are in the back. So we need to bring it forth to the people, and I'm all for being proactive on it.
Mr. Getcho, what's the— let me qualify this. In our city, and for all residents and anyone listening at home, we have a lot of ordinances that help us all get along, right? Rules that keep us neighborly. We don't play Big Brother. We don't go out trying to find out who has three dogs and their— to find out who has three dogs in their house, or three cats. We do have a two-cat, two-dog ordinance. It's usually when I say that to sixth graders, that's all they think about from then on until the end of my talk. We do have ordinances that tell people how close they can put a shed next to a lot line. We just have all these ordinances that help us get along, but we only enforce by complaint. So in the case of this, you are so right on. It's, it could be a huge concern across our city if we become a blighted city, and that could be the beginning of it. So let me ask Mr. Getcho, what's our, what's our process when it comes to trash cans sitting out longer than so many days, breaking our ordinance? Do police ever drop by and just say, hey, a friendly reminder? Do we ever mail anything? What's the process about how we would begin to look at the infractions that are repeating?
Sure, Mayor. I kind of lost you after the cat and dog thing, though.
I'm sorry, what?
No, I'm kidding.
You're back on the cats and dogs.
You're exactly right. No, you're exactly right. No, I'm just being funny. You're exactly right. We, when we, it is a complaint-based process with so many of our ordinances, and we do have staff that follow up with visits, letters, you know, the same thing with tall grass, with outdoor storage, you know, many of those quality-of-life code issues that we talk about. And we do get, at least in the case of the trash receptacle issue, immediate compliance, because maybe we are a little bit unique in that maybe not all cities or people realize that they need to pull it back in after the pickup is completed. So I think the point of Mr. Councilmember Freiberg saying that most people comply immediately, we can use all of our different avenues of communication to keep kind of plugging away at that. We've had the same issue with backyard fire issues. What are the rules on backyard fires? And similar, similar things where I think education plays a good role. But to answer your question, absolutely, we, we follow up on, on all complaints. And maybe one other thing to add, and I think Councilmember Freiberg said this as well, we might get on average about eighty, ninety, a hundred of these a year, but those aren't the number of calls we get. What typically might happen is there might be a call on a particular address, and when we go out, if we see six garbage cans on that street, we'll send out six letters. So we will kind of check out the whole area. But as you said, Mayor, we don't use people to go up and down the streets checking on a daily basis. We haven't gotten to that, to that point. But I think education will help, and, but we do follow up.
So just so that, this is a good idea that Councilmember Freiberg raised, and so that something substantive goes, as an outcome comes out of this meeting. Can it be brought up at a staff meeting tomorrow? Like, when, how can we get this on our website? How, maybe through Nextdoor? I know that, I think, do we, we're not allowed to post on Nextdoor, but we can respond.
We post.
Right. So I'm just saying that, maybe at your staff meeting tomorrow, just explore two, three different social media slash website ideas, just to maybe highlight this. This is a good time of year because of summer, and we're all outside, and to have more trash cans are more noticeable, visible.
Absolutely.
So if you, if that could be a takeaway, is that fine, Councilmember Freiberg?
That would work perfect, because that, that would be the proactive approach I'd like to.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you so much for bringing that up. Now, we are ready to move on to the Housing Task Force, which I'm just really excited about. The idea that we, as a city, would be joining the county and Metropolitan Council and others on the forefront of investigating, and maybe even coming up with outcomes that are substantive on the affordable housing issue, which is very complex. So with that, Mr. Getcho, I don't know that I, maybe I did bring up the sheet, but do we, do you have it also?
Yeah.
Do you want to, would you be comfortable making a motion and reading the names, and then?
Did you read Carol? Yes.
Oh. No. Before you do that, because of open meeting law, we were in discussion downstairs at a workshop, but we brought up a name of a person that had not been contacted, and therefore, I called that person, and I couldn't have told you all until right now. So I'm going to say, I did reach out to Carol Bombin between our meeting downstairs and walking up here. And she would be willing and interested. And if you'd be okay adding that as an eleventh name, then Mr. Aho, Councilmember Aho, if you would read the eleven names, and if everyone's comfortable, and we put that into a motion, we can second it and then appoint. And then in that list, I'm assuming you're going to say Joan Howe-Pulis would be the chair.
All right, I will move to appoint the following individuals to the Housing Task Force. Ann Peacock, Emily Siple, Joan Palmquist, Lyndon Moquist, Mohamed Nur, Pedro Curry, Terry Farley, Kenneth Robinson, Joan Howe-Pulis, Marlene Fisher, and Carol Bombin, with a chair recommended as Joan Howe-Pulis, and vice chair of Lyndon Moquist.
Second that.
Second that list. Are there any, is there any further discussion that you'd like to add, talk about, reconsider?
I think it's a wonderful group. I would add, though, it's not just for affordable housing. It's what kind of housing Eden Prairie needs, you know, broad.
So.
That's one of the big things. But it could apply to, you need certain kinds of other housing, you know, maybe it's at the sixty-five percent level, but.
So that's an interesting question. So we should maybe be clear now, so that staff understands walking away, and that we can really be clear in what we're tasking them. So definitions matter, and it's a good thing that you raised that. And we know, people that have been working in the affordable housing world, there's all kinds of definitions out there with, you know, sixty percent AMI, eighty percent AMI, thirty percent, fifty percent. So to your point of, yes, I, so I'll speak personally here, and then we can all weigh in and make sure that we walk away with a common consensus. But I would like to see the emphasis be the great need of affordable housing, because there are people in, within our border and within the Twin Cities that cannot find housing, that actually have jobs, and they're making thirty, forty, fifty thousand a year, and they cannot find a house to live in. So I'd like to focus to be the affordable component, but the definition's large. And in that context, looking at our housing needs for the next ten, and twenty, and thirty years, it absolutely will include the spectrum, all houses, and for all demographics. But, but I think the focus that the Metropolitan Council right now, that Hennepin County Commission, cities of our neighbors, I've met with mayors around us, I know Edina's looking at this, Menetonka's looking at this, Bloomington, how can we address the need to have people that have incomes? I mean, they're, they're hardworking people, but they're making lower wages, and they cannot find a place to live. The reality is, it's probably going to be apartments and condos, townhouses. It's, it's, we were just, Mr. Freiberg and I were talking before the meeting, that it's almost an impossibility to conceive of a single-family detached house that's brand-new in the city of Eden Prairie, being in any way defined in an affordable range, being built in Eden Prairie today because of land costs. That being said, let's look at that, and let's talk about that. I'd like this group to be tasked with three general, larger areas. I'm not sure if it's a third, a third, and a third, or a half, or whatever, but the first is to gather together all the information that's currently out there, and there's a lot of it. There's data that the Metropolitan Council has, Hennepin County Commission. Also, I'd love to see them decide, they can decide on their own, maybe they pull in our developers that have been developing in Eden Prairie, and pick their brains for a session, bring five, six, seven of them, and bring in our realtors, bring in the school district, just gather information during the first three to four to five months. The second phase of it, I would see, is looking at all the programs that cities across our region, our state, and our nation are actually putting into practice right now to encourage affordable housing. There are workable solutions going on out there right now. Find them, capture them, talk. They may not apply here. We may not ever be able to do what Seattle does, or Portland, but, but bring in what's happening. And then the third is to bring us a long list as a council, not to tie our hands or say we have to do this. We might not be able to do anything. We might find that we already are doing several things on the list. But bring us a list of options that are recommended as possibilities to address this crisis that's, that's definitely unfolding in the Twin Cities area, really as we speak. But by 2030, we're looking at tens of thousands of shortage of, of affordable housing. And across the nation, I've heard figures up to six to seven million shortage of units. So that's, that's the idea. Bring that back to us in three phases. Joan Howe-Pulis is sitting there. I've had, I don't know now, sorry if I'm calling you too much, but five, six, seven conversations. I think Joan is crystal clear on the objective and what she's looking, you know, what we're going to task her to bring back. But let's talk right now, so that the five of us leave here in consensus, so Mr. Getcho very clearly can have that task, how am I wording this, the, what we're going to task them with clearly written out. So go ahead, council, let's see, do you want to, did I, okay, Councilmember Nelson?
In your third part, I'd also like to add, how do we get what we want?
Can I say more about that? I'm not, I like that idea, but.
Well, it's, you know, if we decided, you know, these kinds of things are really what we need, but that's not what's being brought to us. My question is, is how do we get what we want? Because we have limited land left, and so, any ideas about what we can do to get what we want?
Absolutely. Tools. I don't, I mean, I do, thank you. I do not envision they would just simply bring us the idea of you got to do more affordable housing. No, I want to know, how do we do that? How are others doing that? And, and maybe, this is a really complex issue. Maybe we don't get a lot of ideas. Maybe they work for a year, and they can't bring us back much, but that says a lot, too. And I really would love to know what others are doing, if it's working, but I really want something that's substantive. We may choose not to do it. It may be expensive. It may be tax dollars we're not willing to put into it. I don't know, right? But we need to look at that. Others?
There are a lot of tools out there. I've done some research on this, and there are a lot of tools out there, and I think they'll quickly discover, or probably know of them already in some cases. And I think it's just good to bring them back to us, and then we can kind of rank them, prioritize them, and see if any of them are good fits for what we want to accomplish.
Excellent. Mr. Getcho?
Yeah, in terms of a process point, too, I just want to mention that I think it's the goal of the task force not to come back in nine months or twelve months and say, you know, we've had, you know, nine meetings, and we've done, you know, hundreds of hours of work, and like, here's our menu. I think the, the concept that I had in mind was actually to be scheduling periodic workshops to check in with the council, so that.
I like that a lot.
That's on, that things are still in sync with what you're looking for.
Perfect. Just to check in, make sure they're on track.
Right.
The other, the other thing I would love is if they're getting, you know, from some group, they're getting PowerPoint presentations. I would love to get the council email the copy of those PowerPoint, so we can keep up a little bit with what they're hearing.
Sure. Councilmember Norrion?
I think this is, as we all know, is one of the most important tasks we have done last two, three months. It's a very complicated issue, and I'm so proud to be around my colleagues here, councilmember, and councilmembers, and the mayor, to, we actually took initiative and make this happen. So, congratulations to us. This is a starting point.
Thank you. I work at a healthcare company, many of you know, and healthcare companies today are also addressing housing, because they're realizing the interconnectedness between food, housing, health. It's just, it's huge. And so it is exciting to be part of the conversation right now.
Can I just add one more thing, Mayor, that when, when you and I, we met one of the business, local businesses, and they are tying the health and, and the housing and exercise, right, all three together. I don't know, I'm supposed to say the name, but.
You can say it, you can say it. Lifetime.
Lifetime.
But they're, they're looking at these, the interconnectedness of all this.
Of us three together and making.
We are so right in the middle. This is so timely and perfect. And other cities are doing this as well, but I want Eden, I feel like Eden Prairie's maybe looking at this in a new and novel way, and I'm excited about that, too. Councilmember Freiberg?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I, when I first started talking about this, the first night that, back in January, when I was sworn in, I can't tell you how excited I am about it, that we're starting to see it right now. You know, there's so many things we can do, and what's really exciting is we're going to be proactive. I think by following this process, we're not going to be reactive. And I think that was a problem that every city faces, is reactive, reactive, reactive. So I can't tell you, you know, you know, how happy I am about this. And I think that a lot of good things are going to be coming our way off on it, that we can do a lot good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So I believe we had the motion in the second, but no vote. Is that correct? I got confused in the conversation. I believe we need to take a vote. Okay? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Welcome. Congratulations. Joan, we really appreciate the work you're going to be leading and doing. And, and please check in with us regularly, and keep, keep in close tabs. Who's going to be the staff liaison? Jonathan?
Jonathan Stanley, our housing community services manager.
And we'd also like to thank all of the, the members of residents of Eden Prairie that applied to this, to serve on this task force, and thank you for being willing to serve.
And we'll keep, keep applying. We'll get you on something. We need, we need our resident volunteers, so thank you so much. All right, we have a report of public works director, ground storage, water reservoir, and pump station.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mayor Case, councilmembers. So I'm back tonight to talk about a project we've actually been talking about for a number of years, and that's the ground storage reservoir and pump station over off of Eden Prairie Road, just north of Highway 212. So last time we were talking about it, I believe it was March of this year, the city council approved a PUD for the site. And since then, we've secured the necessary property to build the facility. We've also received a watershed district permit, and we've opened bids, which is the, the reason for tonight's discussion. So first, I'd like to really take a step back, and I've got a presentation that I'll be giving, but I'd like to take a step back and just remind the council of the project need. So when we talk about our water system, the entire system, there's really four main components to that. You've got your water supply, that for us would be the fifteen wells that we have, that we bring the water up from the aquifer. And then the second component would be your water treatment plant. And we have a twenty-eight million gallon water treatment plant. Today, for a peak, we might see around twenty, twenty-two million gallons. So we have plenty of capacity at our water treatment plant to get us to close to 2040, so no improvements needed there. I should mention that, too, on our well side, we can meet today's demand, but I think that will be the next project we'll be looking at, is the construction of a new well, or perhaps two. And we'll get started on that here in the next year or two, at least one of the wells. And, but getting back to the system, the, the third main component would be your large diameter transmission mains that you use to push the water all over town and get it to our storage reservoirs and our customers. And from that standpoint, we really have all the large diameter water mains that we need, so I don't see any near-term improvements, system expansion to provide service to new parts of the community. So in very good shape there. And then the fourth component would be water storage. So that is why we're driving this project. We do have a need for water, additional water storage. Right now, between the three above-ground reservoirs we have, and the one below-ground reservoir, we have about eight-point-five million gallons of storage capacity. Tonight, with this project, we'll be adding an additional four million gallons. That'll get us to twelve-and-a-half million gallons. That should provide us with enough storage to get us to roughly 2040. So with this project, we'll be good for a number of years. But you need all four of those components working together to have a system that can support the population demand and the growth that we are going to see, to have resilience within your system. If you are missing, or you are underperforming in one of those areas, that means the other three are overperforming, and you're going to have maintenance breakdowns, you're going to have fatigue of systems. So you need to make sure that all four components are working in tandem. And it allows us to maintain a high level of service, of course, also with fire protection. It would be critical to have a storage component for those peak summer demand days where you might have a fire. Right now, on the western side of town, that is a little bit of a concern without the installation of this new storage reservoir. And then, of course, just providing a safe, sustainable supply of clean, affordable drinking water. You need to make sure you're investing in all four components. So, you know, knowing that we do have the need, our first step was really looking at a place to site this. And we all zeroed in on a location that would be just east of Eden Prairie Road, south of the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail, which is where the Smith Douglas Moore House, the Smith Village Development, would be just on the other side of that trail. And then tucked up just north of Highway 212. So when we looked at citing, there were a number of factors we considered. One was proximity to large diameter water mains, and we do have those close to this site. There was also the context, the neighborhood context. This is a nice location to put a tower, because you don't have residential development around it. Also, impact to tax rule. We didn't want to take private property that's on the tax rule, off the tax rule, and put it in public hands. With this, this was property owned by MinDOT, so it wasn't on tax rule. It was excess right-of-way that they had. There was also cost, looking at the total construction cost. This site was very favorable to keep costs low. And costs low. And there were, there were a couple other, I'm forgetting exactly what they were, but when we went through that matrix, this was the site that everybody agreed seemed to be the most suitable for the installation of this facility. So, next we did a little bit of history research on the site and this is a plat from 1898 of Eden Prairie. And if you look kind of there in the center of the plat, you can see the old Minneapolis and St. Louis Railroad crossed Eden Prairie Road, right there where it says Washington Post, Washburn Post Office. That's where the Eden Prairie Station was. So, trying to understand the context of the land, we also, with the help of, I do have to mention, our appreciation, Ann Higgins, Kathy Case, Paul Thorpe, all helped us do research on what this site used to be. And I think it's with that work, we were able to incorporate some of that into a design of the facility that I think gives it a lot of meaning for the city of Eden Prairie. But, yeah, this is the Eden Prairie Rail Depot and it was the water stop where the steam engines would fill their tender car and they'd get another 40 miles down the road to the next water stop. So, it's kind of suiting that we're putting a water storage reservoir here. It's almost returning the land to its original intended purpose. So, using that historical information, we began working on the site layout. And the project included a 4 million gallon storage reservoir and then also the pump house that you see next to it. And that would allow the water to be pumped in and pumped out into the distribution system. So, using the historical information that we found, we tried to implement that or recreate that environment with the pump house. So, these are a series of renderings that I'll be showing that demonstrates what the pump house would look like. So, this would be right next to the regional trail. People could come off the trail. There'll be a path that connects it to the actual building itself. You could walk up on the landing, the old station platform, and there'll be information kiosks, giving a little bit of historical information about the site, the area. On the other side of the fence where you see that truck and a couple of people are working, that will be the secured side. So, that'll be an ornamental fence. We'll have alarm systems. That will be the restricted area, but everything on this side of the fence would be open to the public. And we did, by the way, incorporate the installation of a water fountain. I think that came up when we were talking about PUD approval. So, that will be included. Made of grasses as well.
Do you have access to water?
So, I think through the design, what we wanted to do is minimize attention on the ground storage reservoir. So, that is our toned brown colors, a lot of plantings around it. But, we wanted to draw attention to the pump house. So, that's where most of our design effort has gone. But, again, here's just a view looking at the opposite end of the depot. Here's another rendering. You can see the tower in the background. And this would be on the parking lot side of the restricted side where we will have people that are in here almost on a daily basis, just doing checks on system, minor maintenance. And then this would be the station platform. So, we're incorporating this map that shows Eden Prairie's rail connection to the upper Midwest. A number of lines used to come in through Eden Prairie, so we'll have that information as well. And then, for those that might be wondering, what does this look like from the Highway 212 side? So, as you're driving, this is, it would be a north, northbound Highway 212 looking up at the site. You will be able to see in the early years, you know, the top portion of that tank, not the pump house, pump station. But, in time, as plants or the trees mature and we add more of them, that will become more green from the highway. So, finally, bid results. I mentioned we opened bids, I believe it was last Thursday. We had an engineer's estimate for the total project of 8.6 million. With the base bid and the alternates that came in at what our recommendation is, a total cost of 7.957 million dollars. And that would include the base bid, so the storage reservoir, the pump house. We are also recommending alternate one be included and that would be the railroad tracks that would be laid out between the regional trail and the depot itself. Alternate two would be a mobile lift that would allow personnel to move equipment in and out of the building. So, that would just be a feature that we would see inside the structure. And then alternate three is actually a deduct of about $60,000. And that is to, rather than use ductile iron pipe for the large diameter main that's coming into the site, use PVC. It's a lower-cost material. The labor costs go down because it's not as heavy to install. So, with that, there would be a $60,000 deduct and we would recommend doing that as well. So, total cost all in with the base bid and all three alternates, 7.957 million would be the recommendation. Funding, funding source for this project is largely from the water access charges that as new development comes in, they pay. We keep that money in a reserve. It helps pay for the expansion of the system. So, the theory that new development pays for itself, this is largely being driven by new development. So, the bulk of the funding would come from the WAC funds we've received. And then there also are about $4 million in the water enterprise bonds that would be included in that as well. These are all part of the rate study that we conducted a couple of years ago and we've been persistently following. So, these were all planned cost and we expected them. So, with that, I think the last slide I have, project timeline. Again, we started in 2015. We've done a number of activities getting this project ready for tonight since then. Open bids last week. Construction would start soon after bid award and would go all the way until August of 2020. I'd say the heavy construction would probably be wrapping up in the spring of next year, late spring of next year, through August. Just do final plantings, seeding, grading, final touches. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Council?
Yeah, I've got a question on the PVC pipe. Will that last as long as the other and, you know, water going through it will still be safe and everything, just as much, I assume?
Yes, absolutely. It's, PVC will theoretically last, you know, 100-plus years. So, longer than ductile iron pipe will.
Sounds great, then.
Yeah. I have no reservations using PVC pipe.
What is the, what is the height of the actual reservoir?
You know, that's, that's a good question. I might have to give some estimates here because I don't know them off.
I mean, just roughly.
I want to say that there's about 30 feet above ground. It may be 10 to 20 feet below ground. It's kind of a rolling hill, so it depends on where you are, but you might have 20 to 25 feet exposed. In some areas, it's going to be 20 to 15 feet would be, again, my estimate.
Yeah, it's sunk into the hill, isn't it?
It is, yeah. We put as much as we could feasibly and economically put underground, but it costs a lot to move the dirt and then you've got to find a place to haul the dirt to. So, we tried to just find the proper balance where you see some of it, but you can hide as much as economically feasible.
Well, when it holds 4 million gallons, it's a pretty big tank.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Enough to have a drinking fountain out front. Yes, Councilmember Freiberg?
Mr. Nelson, I was just going to ask you here. How much, 32.5 for railroad tracks? What do you get for railroad tracks for 32.5? I saw it on their rendition. It looks good.
Yeah.
How long is that?
The railroad tracks are probably, I'm looking at maybe 250 feet long. So, they'd bring in the.
That's a nice touch.
The size, the rail themselves.
Good-looking project. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to award the construction contract for the Ground Storage Water Reservoir and Pump Station to Rice Lake Construction in the amount of $7,957,353.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I believe we have nothing else to come before the council. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.